If we could, I'd like to ask Reverend Stevie Lee to come up and do some more prayer.
Can y'all hear me? Is my this mic on?
Testing. Yeah, your mic's not working.
Yeah. Testing.
I'm gonna say change seats.
Y'all just move.
Danny, Danny, uh, Danny sabotaged your mic so you get somebody to sit close to him.
Danny, Danny, Danny sabotaged your mic so you get somebody to sit close to him.
Okay, can you hear me better?
There we go.
Pastor, also would you at least send a pledge of allegiance as well afterwards?
Yes, sir.
If you would, after the prayer, would you at least send a pledge of allegiance?
We'd have to do that. Before I pray, I'd like to read First Timothy, Chapter 2, verses 1 through 8. It says, "I exhorte therefore, first of all, that supplications, prayers in procession, and giving of thanks be made for all men, for kings, and for all that earn authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceable life in all godliness and honesty; for this is good and acceptable in the sight of God our Savior, who will have all men to be saved and to come unto the knowledge of the truth. For there is one God and one mediator between God and men, the man Christ Jesus, who gave himself a ransom for all, to be testified in due time. Whereunto I am ordained a preacher and an apostle, I speak the truth in Christ and lie not, a teacher of the Gentiles in faith and verity. I will therefore that all men pray everywhere, lifting up holy hands without wrath and doubting." Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the privilege of prayer in the public sector. We thank you, Lord God, that we have the right to believe whatever we believe. Even if we're wrong, we have that right. Even if we're right, we have that right. And Lord, I pray for our county, for our state, for our nation, Lord God, that you would help us to seek that which is right above all else. And Lord, that we would understand that you are in ultimate control because one day we will all breathe our last breath. One day we will all stand in your presence. And one day we will give answer. Help us to know, Lord, that we will give answer for things that we do as leaders, as pastors. Lord, that we would be careful, Lord God, to live godly lives before you, Father, in the name of Jesus. And I ask your blessing upon this meeting, upon those who will speak, those who will decide things today or present positions today, Lord, that we may do it in a godly way, in a kind of peaceful way.
Yes.
Lord, I thank you, and I bring this prayer to you, Father, in the matchless name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Will you stand and do the pledge to the American flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Pastor Lee, thank you so much. And we look forward to having your clergy, Pastor. We look forward to having your clergy do this at every meeting. We'll continue as we have been doing. Great, all right, thank you so, so much. Okay, can I have an adoption of the agenda, a motion to adopt the agenda?
Make a motion that we adopt the agenda, Mr. Chair.
All right, by Sammy Tucker, is there a second?
I'll second.
Very good discussion. No discussion, all in favor? Raise your hand, thank you.
Do we have Brant on?
Who do we have on?
No, but you have me.
Okay, let the record show that, is somebody up there?
That was, that was Russell.
Russell.
He's on.
I'm here, gentlemen.
How do you vote, Mr. Brazel?
I vote aye.
Very good, how's Aruba?
Beautiful.
Thank you. All right. Let the record show that Mr. Brazel voted yes, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Schumake, Mr. Kato, and Jimmy Jones voted yes as well, too, passes. All right, going to item number five, we have proclamations. The legacy weekend for Williams Shorty, the Williams family, Mr., he's got the, okay.
You want to read it from there or you want to?
I can read it from.
Either one of you, I appreciate it, thank you.
Are you ready for me to read it now, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely. No, 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 I'm sorry, let's get a motion put on the floor.
Make a motion that we approve the proclamation for the Williams family, that's before us, please.
Very good, second?
I'll second.
Very good, and thank you, Ms. Schumake, move forward.
Yes, sir, so we have a proclamation honoring the Williams family reunion. Whereas, the William Williams family of Knights Hill has been a part of the Kershaw County Knights Hill community since the early part of the 1800s. And whereas, on July 19th through the 21st, the ancestors of William Williams will be hosting a family reunion where members will be traveling from all parts of the United States. And whereas, the family currently, I'm sorry, the family current life, current life roots span six generations dating back to the 1930s. And whereas, this year's reunion mantra is, "Our roots run deep, our love runs deeper." It's appropriate for the family to return to its root of the Knights Hill community. And whereas, in recognition of the gathering of family members in Kershaw County, South Carolina, let it be known that I, Russell Brazel, a member of the Kershaw County Council representing District 1, do hereby proclaim the weekend of July 19th through 21st, 2024, as the legacy weekend for the William Shorty Williams family.
All right, if I could, I want to go ahead and take a vote, and then we'll get them down for a picture, how's that? Okay, all that are in favor, raise your hands. Mr. Brazel?
Of course, I vote aye. Thank you for doing this.
All unanimous, now, having said that.
And, Mr. Vice Chair, I'm just signed on, I vote aye, yes, as well.
And Mr. Thompson, I'm sorry, I didn't know you were with us now, but welcome, we're glad to have you, and you voted?
Yes.
Very good, let the record show that. If we could, invite the family, and Mr. Brian Mays, I want you to come on. The Williams, yeah, get them on down. Glad to have, glad to have y'all here. No, no, I'm good.
There we go.
Got it, okay. You guys say cheese, look at the media. Hold on one second, let me grab this family, and one second for the county. One, two, three. Okay, hold on one second, let me get one for the county. Ready, one, two, three. Congratulations.
All right, so you go right ahead, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, thank you, I really appreciate this. My name is Edward Williams, I'm the, one of the oldest of the Williams family in this reunion, and I stand here representing Williams Shorty Williams family, going back to 1860 is what we've been able to find on records through our research with the help of Kershaw County Archive and other state documents and from research. So I want to thank Mr. Brazel, Russell Brazel, and the county commissioners on recognizing us with this proclamation, we really do appreciate it. We, I grew up here in Camden, but I've been away for 40 years now, but my mom is still here, she's still living, so I do come back periodically. But I want to thank you all for this recognition, it really means a lot to us.
We thank you for being here, and we're very proud of your family, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just briefly, I know that Councilman Brazel cannot be here today, but he definitely, and he's obviously on the, on the phone, but just, I just want everyone to know, particularly the Williams family, that it was a big deal that this moved forward, so even though Councilman Brazel couldn't be here, he reached out to all of us to make sure that, that your family was recognized, so he's been pushing this very, very hard. So since he can't be here to get his proper credit, I want to make sure that you guys are aware of the work he's put into this.
Well said, because you're, he sure has.
Thank you, Russell.
All right, thank you, Russell.
Appreciate, appreciate everyone taking care of this, and to the Williams family, enjoy, and wonderful part of Kershaw County, just thankful to be a part of this with you and your family.
Thank you, thank you, Russell. All right, moving on to Resolution Number 6. Gregory G.G. Jackson II secnded a resolution that recognizes the professional achievements and philanthropic contributions to the county, South Carolina. Okay, is there, the places on the agenda, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution honoring Mr. Gregory G.G. Jackson II.
That's your motion, is there a second?
I would second.
We got a second, any discussion before we bring it up? Let's go ahead and.
I'm waiting for the vote, and I'll save my comments to last.
Very good, all right, let's, all, all in favor, I'll start with Mr. Thomason.
I vote yes.
Yes, Mr. Brazel?
Aye, sir.
He voted, all right, members of council that are present, let it show that Mr. Tucker, Mr. Schumake, Mr. Kato, and Jones all vote yes, so it's unanimous. It passes, let's get the family up here.
You want to read it, don't you?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead and read it, yeah, go ahead and read it.
Okay, a little, little lengthy, so bear with you.
No, 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 no.
Look here, I yell, go, go right ahead, sir.
I thought I was reading them today. I was doing my exercises.
Yes, sir.
A resolution recognizing Gregory G.G. Jackson II for his professional achievements and philanthropic contributions to Kershaw County. Whereas, Gregory G.G. Jackson II, a resident of Camden, Kershaw County, South Carolina, scholar, student, and an excellent role model from the Kershaw County School District, leading through, leading through completion at Camden Middle School, a notable alumnus of the Jackson Teen Center Camden, South Carolina, and a high school graduate from Ridgeview, Columbia, South Carolina, has distinguished himself through his exceptional talent and dedication to basketball, leading to his enrollment at the University of South Carolina for one year and a subsequent drafting by the Memphis Grizzlies NBA team. And while playing as a freshman at the University of South Carolina, he completed 18 hours of class time and made the dean's list while playing basketball. Whereas, Gregory G.G. Jackson II has consistently demonstrated a commitment to leveraging his success to benefit his community, exemplified by his initiative to host a groom and grind day at the Jackson Teen Center on July 30th, aimed at ensuring that every child in Kershaw County is prepared for a successful first day of school and raising awareness about the critical issue of bullying at the school level. And whereas, the groom and grind day event reflects Gregory G.G. Jackson II's dedication to fostering a supportive and nurturing environment for the youth of Kershaw County by providing essential resources, mentorship, and advocacy against bullying, thereby contributing to the overall well-being and development of this community's children. Whereas, Gregory G.G. Jackson II's ongoing efforts to give back to his community not only highlight his personal integrity and leadership, but also serves as an inspiration to others demonstrating the positive impact that professional athletes can have on their communities through philanthropy and civic engagement. And whereas, the Kershaw County Council acknowledges the importance of supporting initiatives that promote educational success, personal development, and a safe learning environment for all students, aligning with Gregory G.G. Jackson II's mission and objectives for the groom and grind day. Now, therefore, be resolved by the County Council of Kershaw County. The County Council formally recognizes and honors Gregory G.G. Jackson II for his outstanding professional achievements in the field of basketball and his exemplary contributions to the community of Kershaw County. The County Council expresses its sincere gratitude to Gregory G.G. Jackson II for his unwavering support and dedication to the youth of Kershaw County, particularly through the impactful groom and grind day initiative. The County Council encourages all residents and stakeholders in Kershaw County to actively support and participate in Gregory G.G. Jackson II's efforts to promote a positive, safe, and enriching educational environment for all students. Presented this ninth day of July, 2024, Kershaw County is proud to present and be part of the legacy of Gregory G.G. Jackson II for the many outstanding tributes given to the youth and families of Camden, Kershaw County, South Carolina.
Very good, Ms. Schumake. Can we get the family, and then we can make some comments, how's that? Come on, and we have Mr. Brian Mays here as well. And Mr. Mays, we appreciate your efforts on this, to help make this happen as well, sir.
All right, y'all ready? Big smiles, please.
Thank you, congratulations.
Again, congratulations, and Mr. Mays, thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, can we see if Mr. Mays has anything he'd like to say?
Absolutely.
Thank you, I just want to thank council for this. I especially want to thank Mr. G.G. Jackson's parents, they've been involved. G.G. came to visit us at the center, this was when he was at South Carolina, and he just looked us, he stooped down, he didn't have to do that when he first got there, he walked in the office, and he just said, "Ms. Beebe, you're gonna be okay." He said, "I'm going to the league, and I'm gonna come back and see you," and he has. They have done an outstanding job. I know Bishop is tired, he's been running, they flying him all over the country, we were unable to catch him, you know, but this is their moment, you know, they raised a great son, you know, and what I like to say to people is that G.G. Jackson can easily be Dr. G.G. Jackson. He graduated high school in the 11th grade, you know, on the dean's list, playing 18 hours. So this is the, this is the example of a student athlete, which we ought to do better at, you know, we got to let our kids know that there's two parts to it. You can't, just because you can do a good sport, you know, we need more of you. So I just want to take, take the time, thank God for the day that Mom, we call the first lady came into the office and with these ideas, and we start putting everything together, and I don't know why they don't want to talk, because they are the testament of this child, you know? Having two parents in the home and, and being there for him, so I just appreciate it, I appreciate you all. And I'm not going to talk no more, which one of y'all just say hello or something, Bishop. And I'm gonna move before he's standing next to me. First of all, I just want to thank God, and want to thank the committee, I want to thank Mr. Mays for this honor for my son, and I'm Gregory the First, and his mother, Lakeisha, is here, and I just want to appreciate, he never forgot home, even though, you know, he left and played ball over in Richland County, he always, his heart was always here in Kershaw County. And he's always talking about this place, some things he wanted to do in the future here for the youth, and I just appreciate, appreciate what you guys are doing. And my good buddy back here, classmate, Mike Jones.
We've heard of him.
Great guy, and Mr. Tucker, known him a long time.
Yes, sir.
Think his nephew and G.G. used to play ball when they were little boys together.
Yes.
Once again, we thank y'all, appreciate everything.
We thank you so much, so proud of your family. Anything else any member of council would like to say?
If I may, I do want to let the parents know, and Mr. Mays, that we'll be at conference. I'm sorry about not being able to travel so far back that week, but our prayers and our thoughts and our congratulations will be with you guys. I said it to Ms. Jackson earlier, fine job to the both of you on raising such a great son that's grounded, doesn't forget his roots, knows where home is. Everybody who makes success or meets success is not always that humble and willing to sow seeds back where they came from. So thank you, thank you for the hard work you've done, thank you for the son that God has given you and the way you've raised him properly, thank you.
Well put, well put. Okay, anybody else? Very good, we really appreciate, we're honored that we had the opportunity to do that for your family as well, too, to be a small part of it, thank you so much. Okay, if we can move on, public comments, Mr. DeBose.
We have three people signed to speak to public comments.
Very, very good, would you call them up, please? Before you do, excuse me, Mr. Tucker or Mr. Schumake, would you read the rules, please?
Ms. Schumake, you are on the roll, keep going.
Oh, yay.
He's doing good tonight, isn't he?
I did, I learned reading. Kershaw County School System. Public, that's right, public school system, that's right. Public comment guidelines, public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to share information with council. It is not a time for debate with or question and answers from council, it is a time for council to receive input and not a time for council response. In short, during public comment, council will listen to public comment but not comment on those commenting. Individual requesting to speak must sign up with their name, topic, and phone number. Offensive and inappropriate comments will not be tolerated. If a
If a group would like to speak to council, we request that a spokesperson be selected and that the person indicate the group they are representing. Public comment period is limited to five-minute maximum per speaker with a maximum time of thirty minutes. Understanding we have three people signed up, it should be five minutes apiece. And public comments to council as an agenda item shall continue uninterrupted to be livestreamed by audio and video until the public comments agenda items is finished. These rules may be altered or amended by county council by a single vote.
Mr. DeBose.
First speaker is Ted Brunson, there's no subject listed.
Welcome, sir.
Hi, I'm Ted Brunson, registered voter, Kershaw County. Basically, we'll keep it short, which again is not like me, but I'm gonna try and work for that. Sorry, is that better? Thank you. I'll try and be deeper for you, Mr. Schumate, it's not my normal. What I've got is a packet here for each one of you and I'll go over briefly.
Mr. Temper, can you pass this up to us, please?
In it, this was provided by a attorney that is helping us pro bono in looking at some of the issues that we're having here in Kershaw County. One of the more important things in there that I happen to like is there's actually a website that shows municipalities on how to go about instituting a moratorium correctly. In that packet, you're also gonna find two active moratoriums, one from Jasper County and one from Berkeley County. Most of the information that is there is less than one year old. So this is something that's not, you know, Kershaw County is not by themselves. So there's a lot of people that are working on this problem and trying to solve it, solve it well to the benefit of everybody's community. So I would like to ask y'all to go ahead and reach out to some of these other towns that are feeling the same growing pains that we are. But there's a great wealth of information out there and this is a good place to start. But like I said, so we've got active moratoriums on two counties. We also have information on Charleston and itself and protecting its historical areas as well as the city itself. We've got Greenwood, it's led off by Greenwood City Exploring Development Pause. In other words, bringing, slowing things down, I think somebody used it and said pump the brakes. So, and we also have a Clemson in there where Clemson is doing the same thing. And, you know, there's ways to approach it and I know Mr. Brazel is, you know, very concerned about the custom builders and the small builders that are here in Camden as we all should be because they're the ones that spend the money here in Kershaw County. So, but there's, it's not like there are ways to work around it. There's ways to work with everybody that we're coming in contact with. But I think the biggest thing is, is take pause. I have not explored yet if Kershaw County itself has a comprehensive plan as the city does. But the city basically has a guideline or rulebook or playbook that, you know, was established in 1996 that was mandated down by the state to say, hey, guys, y'all need to start looking towards the future. And I don't know if y'all have one or not, I'll find out, I've been a little busy on the city side here lately, so I know y'all miss me.
I miss you.
Just make my heart feel good there, Jimmy. But anyway, so let y'all peruse that. Couple of things that I wanted to bring out in the last two minutes is, it goes along with the committee that was suggested back in November. The public has maybe a problem with, we've got both the city and the county on the same night. And the city doesn't seem to want to move and the county doesn't want to move. You move it one week and everybody's happy. Y'all get to attend, we get to attend. And we're not shuttling back and forth. And so, because what happens in the city affects the county, what happens in the county affects the city. So, moving towards that I think would be helpful in everybody's thoughts. There was also something that was mentioned early on and that was, again, a joint committee using possibly two to four from each council, two from city, two from council, working also with maybe one city zoning and planning person and one county zoning and planning person. And also representative from the equine community. Now, I haven't counted the many horses that are on the Kershaw County website, but if you go on the city, there's twenty-seven images of horses. So we know what the equine industry does for Camden and it's historically been the place in the South. So, we would like to see some more movement on that. Granted, I was in sales for thirty years, so I'm kind of a project guy and when something needs to get done, it needs to get done. Six months is a long time not getting it done, but if anybody would like to talk with me afterwards and let us know where we're at with that particular process, I would appreciate it. I know that Brant Thomason was working on it. And so, again, we'd like to move forward with that as soon as possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, well said, Mr. Brunson, we look forward to talking with you, working, yes, we do have a comprehensive plan and we need to, we will be reaching out to the city as well. Thank you, next speaker.
Linda Kennitzer, SEP.
Welcome, Ms. Linda. Mr. Temper. Would you fix the mic down? I'm looking at you.
Not everyone is. I need everyone's attention, please. Thank you.
I'm looking as well.
I appreciate, oh, great, I'm glad. Hey, we got a couple that aren't there, I hope they're listening at least. Vice Chairman Jones, council members. North Carolina has three. Georgia has three. South Carolina has one. Those are the number of state-owned, operated, and funded equine event facilities that are available to horse groups for lease in a variety of disciplines. North Carolina's three locations are Raleigh, the state capital, at the state fairgrounds. One is outside of Asheville in western North Carolina, the other on the eastern coast in Williamson. Georgia's three locations are Conyers and Alpharetta, both just outside of Atlanta, but that's a central location. The other is in Perry, Georgia, where the state Georgia fairgrounds are located. Where would you guess South Carolina's one facility is located? Y'all know? When the South Carolina State Legislature in Columbia finally got around to planning for its venue of an equine state facility, our Kershaw Showgrounds was already privately operational and so were facilities in Aiken and a not-so-great place at our state fairgrounds in Columbia. Most of the horse show groups thought that the Columbia area would be the best area to locate whatever the state was going to do. However, politics stepped up, stepped in, and the $6.3 million, the first two phases of the complex, the T. Ed Garrison Livestock Arena was built in the northwestern corner of South Carolina in Pendleton, Clemson. Okay. Who then owns the South Carolina Equine Park here in Kershaw County? Who owns that? Well, it's owned by Kershaw County. And it's leased to the South Carolina Equine Promotion Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3). It was formed in year 2007 and officially opened in September of 2009 at one of my Carolina Stars Horse Shows. I had been running horse shows out there for quite some time under different management groups. It's had quite a long history of different people coming in, some managing it well, some managing it not so well, but I managed it. The place closed for a couple of years and then it got reformed and opened back up. With its center of the state location, it's a perfect place to draw people and horses from not just our whole state, but also North Carolina and Georgia. When I ran a lot of my horse shows besides the Camden-Columbia area, guess where most of my exhibitors came from? Charlotte. Charlotte. Now, Charlotte's the largest city of either of the Carolinas and they don't have a good horse show facility. So they love to come to Camden. This is the reason our largest state associations choose to operate their prestigious competitions here in Kershaw County. This year, thirty-one weeks are booked, ranging from one-day horse shows to six, five, six-day events. I believe the South Carolina Equine Park is the largest contributor to the accommodations tax revenue in Kershaw County, along with supporting restaurants, tax shops, and much of our local economy. I want to express my gratitude to the past and current
Time's up.
Equine Park members, especially the chairman Tamara Flynn, who volunteered to oversee the operation of this valuable park of Kershaw County. The sole purpose of my comments
Ms. Linda.
are simply to make our community aware of what that park represents. Thank you.
Thank you very much, well said, well said. Next.
Next is, I believe Edward Williams, if I'm reading the last name correctly.
Mr. Williams, come on down, sir.
I think you already spoke, yeah.
Next person?
That's it.
That's it.
That's it, thank you, thank you all for your wonderful, kind words, we appreciate it. Okay, moving on. We're going to go to the minutes, is there a motion to adopt the minutes?
Mr. Vice Chair, make a motion that we approve the minutes that were taken by Ms. Hannah.
Okay, Mr. Tucker makes a motion, how about, let's go to the guys up in the sky. Mr. Thomason.
I vote yes.
No, we need a second.
We ain't got a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll second, yeah, I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Thomason's second, I would say to her second. Now, go ahead, any, uh, you got any comments? Let's start with them, Ms. Thomason, go ahead, you first.
Uh, no comments, I'm ready to vote when you are.
Mr. Brazel.
No comment, ready to vote.
Thank you, sir, alright. Anybody here?
I just want to tell Ms. Rita, thank you for filling in, we really appreciate you, yes. Yes, ma'am.
Absolutely, Ms. Hannah couldn't be here tonight, we're glad to have you here, Lauren, pretty much. Alright, there's no further discussion? All those in favor of the minutes, raise your hand. Alright, let the director show that it is unanimous. Okay, going to number nine, ordinances. What?
Their vote on the line. The vote, the two fellows on the line, they said they were ready to vote, but they hadn't voted.
How do you vote, Mr. Thomason?
I vote yes.
How do you vote, Mr. Brazel?
Vote aye.
Thank you very much, let it show that it's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Alright, we're moving to number nine, ordinances, second reading, case 24-19. An ordinance to amend the Kershaw County-South Carolina Unified Code of Zoning and Land Development Regulations. Do you have a motion to put this on the floor?
I move to put this on the floor.
Moved by Ms. Schumate, is there a second?
Second.
Very good, is there any discussion?
Just as a brief overview, Mr. Chairman, for those of you who may not have been here last time, basically, this passed first reading unanimously and basically, this is just an ordinance that slightly expands the impervious soil ratio specifically to RV parks. As we discussed last time, it is in line with what other counties are doing. This just gives an opportunity to some of our small businesses to do a little bit more than they're able to do now. So not a huge shift, but it's a huge shift for those small businesses. That's just a brief overview, unless anybody has questions.
Anybody else? Mr. Brazel or Mr. Thomason? Let me say something then. Okay, let me make some.
Don't have anything.
Thank you, sir, let me make a comment. Mr. Schumate, I appreciate all the hard work you've done, I appreciate the concessions you've made on this as well as we sat here and talked. And I think what you have done is a good thing, I think it's gonna help us move forward. And there are some things that I'd like to discuss with you about a little bit later as we move down the path. But thank you so much. Alright, having said that, all in favor? Raise your hand. Let the director show that it's unanimous, all here raising hands, Mr. Brazel. Excuse me.
I think he said aye, Mr. Brazel.
Mr. Thomason.
I vote yes.
Very good, let the director show that it is unanimous. Alright, going to B, second reading, case 24-21. An ordinance amending the Kershaw County's zoning land and development regulations, ZLDR, to provide the single-family residential attached uses, townhouses, patio homes, and multipurpose apartment uses shall not comprise more than ten percent of the net development acreage of a major subdivision. Do I have a motion to put this on the floor?
I make a motion, we approve the second reading.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Alright, go ahead, Mr. Kato.
I think everything's been said, we had some discussion on this in the first reading and I think it's just something we need to move forward with. Stuff explanatory.
Very good. Mr. Brazel, do you have any discussions on this one?
No, sir, thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir, Mr. Thomason.
No, sir, no discussion.
Very good, any other discussion? Let me just say this, Mr. Brazel, I know you worked very hard on this, Ms. Schumate has as well as too and I appreciate all your hard work on this, I think it's moving us in the right direction. So having said all that, all in favor? Passing second reading, raise your hand. Let the director show that it's unanimous here, those present, Mr. Brazel.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Thomason.
Yes.
Very good, let the director show that it's unanimous. Okay, we're at C. First reading of an order to impose a moratorium to temporarily prohibit the acceptance of and processing of applications for zoning map amendments and new development submissions within the geographical boundaries of the airport overlay district section 371 of the Kershaw County Unified Code of Zoning and Land Use Development Regulations, ZLDR, to end the application of the moratorium on January 9, 2025 and to provide for other matters related there to, okay, we got a motion to put this on the floor.
I make a motion to put it on the floor.
Ms. Schumate, a motion to put it on the floor, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we're second, I'm gonna start with you, Ms. Schumate, go ahead.
Yes, sir, and after I speak, I'd like to get to Councilman Thomason if he wants to.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Because this has been kind of his baby, but he asked me to take the lead on making the motion since he'd be here by phone. But in short, this does what it says it does. It basically says they can't build in the airport overlay district for at least until 2025. This gives us time to get, one of our public commentators, Mr. Brunson, taught about the comprehensive plan. That's in the middle of a big rewrite, a big ten-year rewrite, and then following that is the zoning code. So, this moratorium lasts until then, it could possibly be extended. And it gives us a chance to have those discussions and figure out exactly what we want growth to look like. To be clear, this is not a forever ordinance. This is an ordinance that temporarily suspends this stuff just till we can get our hands around this growth and decide what actually makes sense.
Very good, Ms. Schumate. Mr. Thomason, would you like to make any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, thank you, Mr. Schumate. I appreciate you taking the lead on putting this up. And just to echo what you said, the airport really is a critical resource for our county, the history of it. And the airport overlay zoning district has been identified to be expanded within our previous comprehensive plan. So we'd like to continue that. You know, incompatible land uses near the airport really could jeopardize FAA grants and other things. So we're just trying to be very safe and I think it's something that we can look at for the future. And it is gonna be short-term, so we're gonna try this out and see where it goes.
Thank you so much, Mr. Thomason. Mr. Brazel, would you like to say something?
Yeah, so I've got a question. How many projects would this kill in the county that people are already working on? Such as neighborhoods or any sort of commercial development or homes that people have put money into, time into, and how would that affect them and their families?
Mr. Ken DeBose, I'm, excuse, John DeBose, would you?
Close enough.
Yeah, I'm not, I can't speak to that, I'm not personally aware of any.
Joey's back there, we got to plan his own, Director.
Yeah, pending development projects and I'm typically in development review meetings, but Mr. Adams Ruskowski is here. He could speak to any submissions that are currently pending within that district. Again, I'm not aware of any.
Well, Mr. DeBose, thank you so much, that was a great question, by the way, Mr. Brazel, welcome. Welcome.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Um, there are, there's one project, um, that is, I can't speak to because it's under litigation at the moment, but, uh, for other reasons, not the airport overlay, but, uh, there was one other project that was in discussion, uh, of, of recent that will be, uh, uh, tabled for the short-term of this, um, for this moratorium. And it was just a, a smaller ten-unit townhome project.
You've done a good job, Drew, thank you. Mr. Templar?
Yes, sir. I just want to say that, um, you know, just
Thank you, Joey.
A little bit of background on this, um, I, I think this is critical, uh, for the airport out there. Again, that's one of our, um, it's a, the major asset for Kershaw County. Um, it's one of the few airports in, in the state with a crosswind runway. And i- if you remember, the FAA had funded an, a, an initiative to expand the safety zones around the airport, which was doing, uh, kind of the opposite of, of building out there, that we were actually purchasing homes and either demolishing them, or, uh, they were haul, uh, moved away to other locations outside of the safety zone. And what this does is allow for different approaches for aircraft, lower approaches, and, um, it just maintain, maintains the safety of the airport operations a, as a whole. So this is a critical piece here to ensure the, the, the future usability and utility of our airport, because if, if we were not to do this, and we go backwards from what the FAA initiative was to where we are now adding homes to areas around the airport, um, we, we really compromise the ability to use our airport for future uses. So, um, you know, Mr. Schumake said this is, this is temporary, this just allows us to get a handle on things, to make sure that the identified safety zones out there that are identified by the FAA, um, are adhered to, and we have a better sense of what is permissible in those zones.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Tucker.
Couple of quick questions and clarity. One is, um, you talk about the FAA, um, that's possible losing our grants, which, um, has really helped us to grow our airport.
Yes.
By not doing this. Am I correct by saying that?
Correct. And we have received millions, literally millions of dollars for drainage, for resurfacing, for runway lighting.
Extending runways.
Extending. Um, and again, it just, uh, you know, for the usability and viability of, of that airport out there. So, yes.
All right. And then my other question, Mr. DeBeauz, I heard word used not forever, not for long, temporary. Um, this could be six months, this could be eighteen months. Uh, Council has the authority to withdraw it if need be, or issues or concerns come up. Am I correct by saying that?
Yeah, um, it's passed by an ordinance, it would have to be, uh, essentially repealed by an ordinance.
Correct.
As structured, it automatically would expire on January nine, twenty twenty-five, but Council by resolution, um, brought to its attention by the administrator, or on its own accord, as drafted, could extend, um, and this is baked into it, extend the moratorium until April ninth, twenty twenty-five. Um, some contexts, consults have been retained to, uh, look at specifically this airport overlay and, and provide guidance on, um, how to bolster it and protect this county asset.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Anybody else? I think this is good stuff, I appreciate it. Appreciate all the hard work everybody's done on this. And I know that, uh, I've met and talked with some of the folks out in the airport, they certainly support it. And thank you.
You were there this weekend, I believe, or this last week, right?
Exactly. So, yeah, so guys, listen, good job, good job on putting this together. Okay, we had a motion, we had a second, we had discussion, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, if I could, okay, all those in favor that are here, let the record show Tucker, Schumake, Kato, and Jones vote yes. Uh, Mr. Brazel.
I voted, I, I vote against it, uh, but no.
You vote no, okay. Uh, Mr. Thomason.
I vote yes.
Very good. Let the record show that Mr. Brazel voted no, all others voted yes. It passes. Okay, moving to council briefings. I'd start with Mr. Thomason.
Um, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So I, listening to Mr. Ted Brunson's, um, public comments, I just wanted to kind of give a response. So last meeting, I went through and gave a brief on talking points. So thank you to Mr. Ned Towell, who put a lot of time and energy in to the process of creating the joint equine committee, uh, with the city and the county, and I think it's going to be a huge thing going forward, but Mr. Ned Towell has drafted up ordinances, um, went around the state and looked at other ones, put drafts together for the city and the county, both, um, entities both have those ordinances, and then also a draft, um, he put up a draft application for the, for review. So currently, right now, it's in staff's hands. I'm assuming we probably have a couple months for the staff to be able to review, make sure we're good, and then we should be having a vote coming up on this ordinance within the next month or two. But that's all I have. I appreciate everybody, and hope you have a blessed evening.
Thank you, Mr. Thomason. Mr. Brazel.
Yeah, also, I'd like to say thanks to everyone for, uh, helping facilitate the proclamations. I appreciate you doing that while I'm away with my family on vacation, and, uh, um, appreciate Mr. Tucker straightening up my sign. And that's all I have.
That's it, Mr. Brazel, thank you so much.
My name, my name, please.
Mr. Tucker.
Uh, thank you. You're quite welcome, Mr. Brazel, and, um, I have no further comments. Uh, thank you, Mr. Jones, meeting, well, well done.
Mr. Schumake.
Just very briefly, um, this past weekend, we had three, uh, girls softball teams go to the state championships, um, for the Dixie Youth, Dixie Darlings, Dixie Angels and Dixie Ponytails, ages seven, eight, nine to ten, eleven to twelve. So congratulations to those young ladies, they were out in some pretty incredible heat. Speaking of being out in the heat, we'll have one more meeting, but August third is the Watery Trash Fest. Uh, uh, some, uh, group, some folks, Russell's really close to, along with the Clean Community Commission, set that thing up. I went there last couple of years. It's a chance to clean the river out at the Veterans Park Boat Ramp. Uh, seven thirty AM is registration, so you can come, you can bring something to get into the water, or you can come just without anything and helping clean trash. It, it, litter pickup starts at eight and ends at eleven thirty. So for all those that complain about litter, and I'm one of them, two and a half hours, you know, make us, make a dent back in that, particularly there on the water.
What's the date again?
Uh, August third, it's Saturday, so it's, uh, the first Saturday in August. So August third, I know schools are starting back, people can be really busy, but, um, and for those of you that have kids and need community service hours, it's a great way to get community service hours. I'll be there, I'll sign off on any community service hours. So bring me the forms, I'll sign off on all the community service hours. So, um, be awesome if you came. Uh, congratulations to the Williams family, Jackson family, that's really awesome, and always good, I know he's got a shot already, but always good to see, uh, Mr. Mike Jones, uh, good to see you. That's all that I have.
Thank you, Mr. Schumake. Mr. Kato.
I have no report tonight, thank you.
No report, thank, uh, Mr. Schumake, thank you for bringing up the Clean Community Commission, I have a couple of comments I want to make. The Clean Community Commission receives about six K dollars in the current budget. Fee and loo of tax receipts equal about one point nine million dollars. The Clean Commission members are volunteers who devote countless hours to the improvement of our county. They are volunteers, and they organize countless volunteers to improve the county, which is essential for quality of life for our citizens and, and our economic development, and to, and they are an economic development too, I, I believe, as well. We need to increase funding, this is where I'm coming from, we need to increase funding for the Clean Community Commission as an economic development project, as a tool of economic development. I'm asking the administrator, the administration, to look into this and look into how to increase the funding to a significant number that is a realistic budget for the Clean Community Commission. I will get with the administrator to look into this important matter and put it on the future agenda items. This will generate a positive image for our county and help our economic development as an economic development project. Here's where I'm going, guys. I would like to see Kershaw County be number one in the state when it comes to clean community, and I believe we can do it. We can do it six K. I have asked the administrator to look into the fee and loo, how it's distributed, the amount that we have, and I'm, I'm excited about this, let's get it back with you later on down the road. But I believe Kershaw County, if we dedicate the resources for it, we don't have to raise taxes, we don't have to raise fees or create anything like that, we got the money, it's just a matter of appropriation. I want to see Kershaw County attack the litter, and again, be an example for everybody in Cur, in South Carolina, for Kershaw County to be an example for everybody in South Carolina. All right, that's all I've got, and, uh, Jacob Hammond, welcome. I feel blessed to have you here tonight. He's a good man, does a great job, thank you. Okay, so we're moving along, let's go to administrative briefing.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, members of council, uh, just, I'm happy to report that our nine one one issue this morning with, where certain mobile network providers, uh, were not able to connect with nine one one services, it, it's been resolved. Um, but in that, that time, um, our community really rallied, so I want to personally thank our community for helping us to get the word out. So in just the, the past six hours of putting this information out on social media, we had a hundred and ninety-eight shares on Facebook with over, uh, seven thousand six hundred impressions. So that was a, uh, a, a very critical issue, it was resolved, but, um, the, the community really stepped up and was able to help share that critical piece of information. Uh, you know, in, in this day and age, you pick up your cell phone or whatever, you hit nine one one, you kind of expect a connection there, but this was a network provider issue, nothing with our nine one one itself, but still, it, it, um, that was kind of a, a scary time. So just thank you, Kershaw County, for all of y'all that engaged with that, uh, item, shared it, and, and spread the word. Just a great example of, of community helping the community. Also, you might have seen a sneak peek on social media last Friday, but Kershaw County is excited to roll out Q Public. This is a different form of our GIS software. Uh, this is really taking a step forward, and, um, it's going to combine, um, a computer aided mass appraisal, assessment, and tax information into a single user-friendly web application. Uh, staff has been using this to get proficient, we know we're going to have a little bit of a learning curve with the citizens, so with that, uh, our launch is tomorrow, and if any member of the public needs help utilizing Q Public, we have great online video resource on our website. And as always, our GIS team, GIS team is always available by phone or walk-in to help as well. Um, we've got a great GIS team. They're beyond helpful, they're always, uh, willing to take the time and explain anything, so, but again, this, I'm, I'm excited about this, this is yet another area where we kind of take a step into the twenty-first century with, with this new platform as it relates to, um, GIS and our mapping. So, and that's all I have.
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Templar. I have one quick thing I want to say, and I'm going to give each one of you an opportunity as well, too. Okay, uh, you've been gone for a week, vacation.
I don't know where you're going.
A little, little more than that.
That's okay. And, and, and Gerald was gone as well, and I, I'm going to tell you something, this lady stepped up to the table, I, uh, was so impressed when I called in, and, and she was out there helping us figure out why the ditch was dug wrong, or why the, somebody, somebody needed some drainage issues corrected, and she was out there, she talked with citizens, and it was just a win-win. Mr. Templar, let me say this, uh, an administrator who takes a week or two off, and his organization falls apart, hasn't done his job, but when a administrator can leave for two weeks, and your agency run is good or better without you, you've done a darn good job. Okay, so therefore, thank you, thank you. Any?
I just, I, honestly, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up. Uh, Ms., Ms. Reader helped me with, uh, there was an issue about something, social media that I needed to get out, and, um, it was a Friday after July fourth, and she got it out instantly, to, and much to the thanks of a lot of families. Um, so yeah, I agree. I, I think, you know, we, we, we are in this culture sometimes where people think it's a good thing to be, you know, um, irreplaceable, and if you're running any kind of institution worth having, being irreplaceable is about the worst thing you can be. Um, there's a difference between being replaceable and being sort of not good at your job. A great administrator is replaceable because he builds a culture around him that, you know, can step in when he's there, but he's leading kind of by example. So Gerald, Lauren, all the folks, so I, I second, Mr. Chairman, I agree completely that it's a testament to your leadership bec, and lack of ego, that you feel comfortable letting your staff handle these things, because a lot of people want to control that funnel, so, uh, hats off to you, Danny, um, great job.
Thank you, Mr.
And Lauren.
Thank you. Okay, having said that, we're going to go to legal briefing.
Hold on, Mr. Jones.
I thought you didn't want to say anything.
Ah, I changed my mind.
Go ahead, Ms. Tucker. You got, you have the floor, sir.
I, I just want to say this, actually, I talked to Ms. Reader, um, last week myself, and, um, her conversation went to me as, because she wear heels, she can still kick butt, just like the boys in boots, so, um, uh, kudos to you for, uh, standing up and handling your business and not being afraid or intimidated to, uh, step in the, the position, and, uh, we appreciate that. And I know the employees as well were very grateful and thankful for your presence and leadership, so, thank you.
You have a great mentor.
There you go.
All right, very good, very good. There's nothing else that I could say.
Did okay, though.
Thank you, thank you, guys, let's move on. Legal briefing.
Nothing outside of the executive session item.
How long? Short executive session?
Depends on how many questions you'll ask.
Sound like CR, damn it.
It can be very short.
All right. Do I have a motion moving to executive session?
Mr. Vice Chair, I make a motion, we go to executive session for personnel matter?
I'll second.
Legal?
Uh, pending lit.
Pending, pending lit, okay. Pending litigation.
Motion, Mr. Tucker, second.
I'll second.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Kato. All right, having said that, any discussion? All right, we're going to transfer our guys into executive session as well, all right. All those in favor going to executive session, raise your hand. The record shows unanimous here. Mr. Thomason.
I vote yes.
Mr. Brazel. All right, he's already gone. Very good. All, so we're ready to go to executive session?
Yes, sir.
Carrie, is, is Mr. Brazel gone?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So we're down to five.
We're in a short, short executive session. We're in his short, short executive session. I can't hear. We're on now. Is there a motion to come into executive session?
Make a motion. We come into executive session, sir.
Mr. Tucker, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kato, any discussion? Very good.
Do we have Brad back, sir?
He's gonna, he dropped.
I thought he dropped.
It's just us now.
It's just us, okay. All in favor of coming into executive session, raise your hand. Let the director show that it's unanimous. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Sorry about that.
Motion by Mr. Tucker, second by Mr. Kato. Any discussion?
Stay here and talk to yourself.
Not gonna happen. All in favor, raise your hand.